Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, law chapter thirty A, section twenty, the public will not be allowed physically access this school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on channel twelve and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Kevin, we have some correspondence.
Thank you, Ryan. The following correspondence was recorded. A variety of emailed letters regarding increasing the in-person learning for students this year and next year from the following people. Megan Henshaw on February fourth. Gillian Jusko on February fourth. Lorraine Russo on February ninth. Amy Tracy on February tenth. Kara and Tom Conway on February tenth. Deb Novotny on February tenth. Anna Circa-Griball on February tenth. The fifth grade team at Blueberry on February eleventh. Tim and Victoria Wright on February twelfth. Karen and Greg DeRocher on February thirteenth. Bernadette Donnervin on February thirteenth. Denise and John Wujack on February sixteenth. An email from Ms. Elizabeth Menietzis dated February seventh with appreciation for the budgeted increase in substitute salaries for the 2021-22 school year. An email from Ms. Lynn Legiade dated February ninth, 2021, regarding air quality in the schools. An email from Ms. Kayla Worland dated February tenth thanking the school committee for their support for the possible installation of an EV charging station at Long Meadow High School. An email from Ms. Kayla Worland dated February eleventh regarding students from Long Meadow High School selected to be part of the 2021 All-State Music Festival. And finally, an email from Ms. Kayla Worland dated February twelfth regarding the limitations for music instruction during the pandemic.
Thank you, Kevin. Our next item of business. Thank you. Is the Student Advisory Council. So we're gonna have to unmute you all. So the method we're gonna do for this is if you can raise your hand so I can see whose turn it is to speak, I'll be able to click through the screens and choose the correct person. So first up, Thomas, sorry, give me a second, bud.
Okay, hi, everyone. I'm Thomas using he/him pronouns and I'll be updating on the Robotics Club and Democrats Club. So the Robotics Club is working on establishing an RC car competition in lieu of the event. First Robotics being canceled this season and they're also recruiting new members. And the Democrats Club has broken into three different social justice committees and they're all presenting on a different topic at each Democrats Club meeting. So those committees being LGBTQ plus inclusion, climate change in the COVID crisis. And they're also writing two op-eds collectively, one on a climate change bill and another on equity in the vaccine rollout. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Thomas. Who is the next student? Click to the next screen. Tommy, give me a second.
Hi, everyone. So I'll be presenting about Key Club, NHS, and Film Club. Over the past couple of weeks, Key Club has created a positivity campaign. Members created QR codes that are hung up all around the academic wing. And when scanned, these reveal positive messages and pictures that members created using people drawings. Secondly, members made handmade thank you cards for all staff members at LHS. And this has been a yearly tradition and they were happy to continue this despite the challenges of not always being in school. Finally, members also made virtual Valentine's Day cards for pediatric cancer patients at St. Jude Hospital. National Honor Society, or NHS, has been conducting virtual touring sessions as usual. The induction ceremony for the incoming junior class NHS members will be held soon, hopefully in the school auditorium. It would be a quicker induction ceremony than usual years to follow safety precautions. And the guest speaker for this year's ceremony is the English teacher, Mr. Wild. Regarding Film Club, they have been meeting weekly over Zoom to watch some short films and analyze them. Members share their perspectives and opinions on anything they have watched over the past week. They plan to also have a movie day bi-weekly where members watch a movie over Zoom together. And there has been talk of some long-term plans of making a short film and entering it into a contest or festival. But that would most likely take place next year. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Tommy. Will the next speaker raise their hand for us? Bridgette, give me a second.
So I'm gonna be talking with the art and the music departments. The art department has kind of, there hasn't been anything new happening. They've just been continuing on the individual projects both in and out of the classroom since the last time I updated you guys. And then in the music department, I wanted to talk about the Triumph Honor Society, which is an extracurricular group at the high school where they've been had the opportunity this year to have and install a leadership development curriculum where they work on traits of effective leaders, being a good motivator for others, how to encourage people as a leader, being very professional, and the distinct role of the individual and the section in ensembles, specifically in music groups. They've also had the opportunity to have a lot of alumni speakers come in, including Jerika Lee, who was a member of the LHS music department. And she also went to Harvard University studying comparative literature and being involved in varsity swimming as well. Then they also had the alumni Eric Lesser, who is now our state senator. And then they had alumnus Jeremy Saffer, who transitioned from studying performance at Berkeley to running a high successfully business as a photographer specializing in heavy metal musicians along with a bunch of other alumni. They have about thirty-seven students who are enrolled in this program and it's been going really well.
Thank you, Bridgette.
And Owen is next.
Owen is next, Diane.
Okay, thank you. So I'll be going over Stand Club and GSA Club. So Stand Club doesn't really have anything new material-wise, but they will be performing a hybrid meeting shortly, likely sometime in March. They'll be meeting in the Business and Technology Center at the high school with Cohort A and one side of the room and Cohort B on the other side, whereas Cohort C will have to join online. The hope this will run smoothly, but it will be tricky considering club meetings have a lot of communication between members with two-thirds of them in person. So some difficulties are predicted. As for GSA Club, there are several new projects currently occurring and happening soon. They have been getting their terminology posters up in the halls and are presently planning their annual meeting with Principal Anders as well as a Q and A session where GSA will discuss gender and sexual orientation related topics with teachers. On top of this, GSA is also collaborating with several student government representatives and officers about creating an email to teachers providing information on pronoun usage. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Owen. Is there another speaker?
Yes, so I will be talking about as schools match wits, which is the LHS trivia team. They have been meeting virtually and they are preparing for virtual competitions. And their next competition is called the Blender Bowl, which they will be competing in next Tuesday. And our next speaker is Charles.
So I'll be reporting back on Science Olympiad and the Yearbook Club. So for Science Olympiad, there's a meeting this Thursday to go over the rules and regulations for the U Penn events, which are happening this weekend and also in around a month through the states. For Yearbook Club, there's anything new?
Thank you, Charles. Is there another speaker? Max comes up, Diane.
Hello. So I'm gonna start with Impressions, which is our school's literary magazine. During their first semester, they focused on providing opportunities for members to be creative and focus on writing. They did, they did this by writing activities during meetings and sharing outside projects they were working on as well as discussing published work that they enjoy. Since the beginning of quarter three, so just recently, they started to work on their literary magazine. They're collecting submissions of art and writing and reviewing them during their meetings, reviewing editing. They're going to continue to work on the magazine until it will be published near the end of the school year. And they're also setting up a digital presence for Impressions on Instagram. Climate Change Club is now partnering with some parks and rec organizations to plan an Earth Day cleanup event. The Red Cross Club, club members are currently researching their topics for their COVID awareness, digital posters that I mentioned a few meetings ago. So they're also working with Springfield Red Cross to assist them in one-hour disaster preparedness Zoom classes that they give to Western Mass Elementary Schools. They're trying to get club members signed up to act as tech assistants, so helping share screen, navigation, navigating a presentation, et cetera, in those Zoom calls. They're still figuring out the training, the time slots, et cetera. So this is still a work in progress, but they're hoping to have club members start acting as tech assistants in March. And then an update on the presentation we gave two meetings or one meeting ago with the full SCAC. So, so in early December, we noticed in talking with students that academic dishonesty and how it relates to disparities with assessing between school, in-school and remote cohorts was a student concern. So over the past month, working with Mr. Dunkley, the SCAC put together a few questions. We hope to discuss with teachers and get their perspective on the situation and hopefully answer some of those student concerns. Mr. Dunkley sent out that, those questions a little before break, I believe. We've yet to get a teacher response on that, but at least as far as I know, but we're going to keep working on that since it was a student concern. And then lastly, we've set up a virtual suggestion box. There's a link to it on the LHS website under the student dropdown. But we know students respond best when they're personally emailed, so we worked with individual class officers, so they would advertise it as well. There was nothing, those submissions that we felt need to be brought to the school committee, but a few concerns. Actually, one concern we forwarded to the class officers, we felt could deal with it better and more directly. It was a concern about music at the freshman, music at lunch for the freshmen and sophomores. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Maxim. Are there other speakers? No. Thank you all. We always appreciate you all coming and tell us what you're up to and what your classmates are up to. As usual, it is fantastic stuff and we appreciate it very much. Our next agenda item are the possible motions regarding our previous minutes.
I'm happy to take those, Ryan. I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the February second, 2021 school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Brownman?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
I very much appreciate not having to find you on screens. This is so much easier. Kevin, another one?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the February ninth, 2021 school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin? Tiana?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Brownman?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Last one, Kevin?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the February sixteenth, 2021 school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin? Tiana?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Brownman?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you very much. Our next item is visitor comments. Because of the structure of the meeting platform, in order to speak, I need you to use the, what is it, the reactions? In the bottom of the Zoom chat so that you can raise your virtual hand. And then I can see that you have asked to speak and I'll call on you. First one I see is Mary Alice Abbott. Diane, can you unmute her so she can speak? May just take a moment while we find your name on the list. You want me to look too, Diane? It's up top. You have it. It's near the, it's one of the first ones. It's right under your name. There you go.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the Long Meadow School Committee and community. My comments come from my perspective as a resident of Long Meadow, a full-time physician, a parent of two students at Long Meadow High School, and as a leader in the Department of Pediatrics at Bay State Children's Hospital. I've co-authored two opinion pieces that have been published in local papers, "School is Essential" and "Our Children Are Not Okay." I've been compelled to speak out then and now because the months of isolation, lack of personal contact, fractured peer interactions, and changes in educational structure are having severe effects on the well-being of our kids. They are falling behind socially, emotionally, and many are failing academically. Those of us who talk with children and their parents every day are alarmed. We are seeing frightening rates of mental and behavioral health issues requiring hospitalization, eating disorders, suicide attempts, and high rates of injuries due to inadequate supervision. Of course, this is just the tip of the iceberg. With few exceptions, even the most resilient of our kids are adrift. In a matter of weeks, our children will have missed an entire year of traditional schooling. Last March, it made sense to keep kids out of school. A highly contagious virus, not a lot of information about transmission and treatment, a vulnerable healthcare system, and a lack of protective equipment. A pivot to remote learning made sense then. Now, a year after its emergence, COVID-19 is the most studied infectious disease ever. We're now armed with a dramatically improved understanding of this respiratory virus and its behavior. The science is now clear. When well-accepted mitigation strategies are in place, hand washing, masking, and physical distancing, there is little to no transmission of COVID-19 in schools. In fact, rates of COVID are lower where kids are in school compared to out of school. Statements from the CBC and the American Academy of Pediatrics support in-person school. All around us, many schools have been providing effective in-person learning for months. Vaccination is one mitigation strategy, but it is not required for successful return to school. For so many of our children and their families, the cost of further delaying a return to school is steep. The negative impact academically and psychologically must not be undervalued. It's time to take a careful look at the heavy costs of our current educational strategy. I thank you for the work that you've done so far to get some of our students back to school some of the time. I applaud the statements delivered today at the governor's press conference prioritizing return to school. I affirm to this committee that remote schooling is causing harm and advocate for an accelerated timeline for a return to district-wide in-person school five days a week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking. We appreciate it. Anyone else interested in speaking this evening, do the same process on the bottom of your screen. You can do the reaction and do raise your hand. I don't see any others, but I'm giving you all a minute just in case you don't know how Zoom works very well. All right. I don't see any others. So I'm gonna move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Committee members, do anyone have any announcements or recognitions? Tiana?
Thanks, Ryan. I, I just wanted to, I don't have specifics, but at my school, we celebrate Friendship Day and it's about diversity and kindness. And so since there's a lot to be, you know, grumpy about in this world today for kids and adults, I just wanted to celebrate and appreciate the little acts of kindness that I have heard about or that I've seen myself from students to students and from adults to each other. Helping appear with homework, shoveling a neighbor's walk, calling a friend just to check in, and many other evidence acts of kindness that may seem small at the time, but are actually very big to the person that is receiving the kindness. So thank you to everybody who has been being a good friend and showing kindness to each other.
Thank you, Joanna. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is our business with guests. Update on instructional model Superintendent O'Shea. The admin team will be presenting some alternate plans for returning more students to in-person learning.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate once again the, the committee's encouragement to ask us to have this really important conversation. And so with us tonight is a, is a cast of familiar characters. On the town side, we are joined by Chief Dearborn, Facilities Director Nick Jurgantus. Andy Frazier is a COVID officer for the town. He is with us as well. And I believe somewhere on our screens here, perhaps not, is Cheryl Messer. She is the Public Health Coordinator as well. And so along with the town officials is our entire administrative team who have done yeoman's work throughout the year and even in the last couple of weeks to put us in a position to make some exciting announcements to the committee tonight and to the community. So let me just share the screen here. Excuse me. Okay. So I'll start with a graphic that we've used in the past and, and more importantly, start with our guiding question. The question that we have put on just about every PowerPoint that we have brought forward over the last several months. And that is, how can we safely return more students for more in-person learning? And that's been, that's been the guiding question. And with a tremendous amount of combined effort with great support from the school committee, I think we've made fantastic strides and we're here to talk to you about some other opportunities that are before us tonight. And so this is a continuum that we have been working along against since, since August. And we have been increasingly to the sort of the right of this continuum, that, that new guidance, our new understanding of the, of the virus, that the mitigation strategies that we have had in place have created opportunities for us to phase in more in-person learning. I think it's an important, it's an important path that we stay on. And it certainly, I would agree with the, the Dr. Abbott, who noted that, you know, children need the experience of regular in-person learning for their own academic development and social emotional development. I think that's something that we, we all have consistently agreed with. And so I thought it might be worth a little retrospective look. And I won't go through this, but it really is just to demonstrate the various milestones that we've hit since July of 2020 when we began with some in-person, home in-person services to some students that in the preschool and some elementary students with intensive needs. And so that put us on the path to continually reevaluate, adjust, and seek out opportunities for more in-person learning. And so as we, as we went through the progression, you'll see that we have been, you know, taken some ambitious steps forward. There have been times when we've had to slide backwards to, towards more remote learning. You know, over the, over the holidays, we all know that there was some significant amount of community transmission and, and some significant staffing challenges. And so we, we needed to respond accordingly. But I think we, we're at a point now where we can, you know, ambitiously look for opportunities to provide more in-person learning for more students. So what I'd like to do right now is just provide you with an overview of some of the opportunities that are before us. And then we'll back up. I'll ask Chief Dearborn and the town team to give us some insights on town trends and regional trends and also to review the latest CDC guidance that has come out. I will acknowledge that just this afternoon, sort of before, you know, we had a chance to even digest it, the commissioner, the DESI Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, had made a, an announcement around DESI's intention to really take a hard look at hybrid and remote learning and make some determinations as to whether that in fact counted as time on learning. And he went on in that statement to indicate that by April, he was expecting that elementary students be back for full in-person learning. So we, we need to understand, I want to acknowledge sort of upfront that that's, that's information that only came to us just before this meeting. And I think that will have important implications for our work going forward. And we'll have to understand the, you know, the path that DESI is potentially putting us on and how that affects everything that we're doing here in Long Meadow. So I'll start with an overview of where the opportunities are. And then we'll back up. I'll bring in the town officials to talk about local trends, CDC guidance. And then each of our, our element, our principals will report on the opportunities that exist at the elementary, middle, and high school level. So here's again, an overview that we will, that we intend to come back to. So the, the, the key consideration here obviously is, is safety, health and safety, but we also need to ensure operational feasibility. There are, there are times when, you know, the, we're able to demonstrate that we can do something safely, but sometimes the, the operational feasibility of that is a challenge or vice versa. But so what we, what we will be presenting tonight is a plan. I'm excited to announce that we have, we're able to implement a plan to offer our fifth graders, fifth grade students, four days a week of learning at all three elementary schools. And we're projecting a start date of March fifteenth. And as, as the committee is very And as the committee is very aware and as the community knows, there's a lot of work and planning that needs to go into that. There's a lot of coordinated and concerted work that has to happen from the school committee, from the central office admin, and from school-based administrators, and also the teachers at the classroom level and staff at the building level. We also, the committee and the community is also aware that we have already initiated a plan to offer our seniors in cohorts A and B access to four days of in-person learning. And excited to announce that Principal Landers expects that 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 will begin on March 1st, next Monday. So that's all of our Long Meadow High students in cohorts A and B have been offered that opportunity. So that's a great news. The other thing that I'd like to, we'd like to talk to the committee about tonight, and our middle school principals are here, is to talk about initiating a feasibility study to offer our sixth graders four days per week of in-person learning with a potential start date of March 22. I say potential because there are some challenges that we need to work through that we'll talk about shortly. But that would coincide with the beginning of the third trimester at the middle school level. At grades nine and 11, Principal Landers is here to talk to you about an opportunity that they're exploring to design and implement a plan for Long Meadow High students in grades nine, 11, who are in cohort A and B, to access in-person learning with a projected implementation start date of March 8. That will most likely need to happen on a phased basis, simply because to bring back, you'll hear from Principal Landers, but to bring back our students in grades nine, 11, in cohorts A and B, it requires a tremendous amount of scheduling and planning and logistical setup. And so with this, we will be in a position to introduce, approximately 800 students will have the opportunity in cohorts A and B to access four-day-per-week learning in Long Meadow public schools. I think it's ambitious. These are ambitious plans. This is an ambitious step forward for us. And it is a recognition that I think this committee has charged us with seeking opportunities to safely provide more in-person learning. And so that clearly was the expectation, the direction of the committee. And we think that we're in a position to take on the bullets that are on this slide and to offer hundreds more students opportunities to learn four days a week in person. Of course, I want to emphasize, and you'll hear more of this later, that we need to think about, obviously, the health and safety of this and then the operational feasibility. There are, as the committee has come to learn and the community, I think, even understands this now, is that we have to plan out everything from transportation to lunch to movement throughout the building and just make sure that we have the capacity to do this safely. So you'll learn more about that later. If, I'm sorry. Back. Did you lose much? Okay, okay. So if, and I highlighted the if, if we're able to establish the operational feasibility and the safety of these initiatives, that the end result would be that we would be looking at, 11 out of our 13 grades would have, students had the opportunity to access in-person learning for four or four and a half days per week. And I think that would frankly put us at the front edge, certainly in this area, of districts that have worked collaboratively at all levels with students, with parents, with the committee, with our partners in the LEA, to provide avenues for increased in-person learning. So we're here to talk to you about that tonight. Our admin team is excited. But to back up, as I said I would, I'd like to start really where we should, and that is with a review of local health and safety trends and a review of the evolving guidance. My thought is that after we sort of dissect some of this, that we would give you, the committee, an opportunity to ask questions of our town officials, who will walk us through this, okay? So I will, I'll turn to Chief Dearborn, who has been just a rock for us and a great partner as we've hit these milestones throughout the year. Chief Dearborn, if you'd take a few minutes to tell us a little bit about some of the local trends that you're seeing and how they line up to the seven-day case counts that the CDC is now asking us to take a look at and how it stacks up to sort of the 14-day trends that are more familiar to us. And then from there, we'll take a look at the CDC guidance. And Chief Dearborn, I do have a visual for us that would help us understand the CDC operational decision-making matrix. So I'll turn it over to Chief Dearborn, and you can lead us. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. O'Shea, and thank you, once again, to the school committee for having me. So overall, the committee continues to do very well. Our overall case counts continue to decrease as of today. And I'll be filling for Cheryl tonight. Cheryl wasn't available, but she's been a rock. Feeds us information every day. We spent a lot of time, for the last few days, really working with the new CDC guidance. And I'll talk about, there's some differences with that that are a little bit unique. But as of today, we're at 23 active cases. It does maintain us in the yellow category from the state system. Okay, we're going to get into two different systems now, unfortunately. Our percent positivity is right around 1.82%. So in the state system, if we could drop down below 10 active cases with that percent positivity, we would actually drop down into the green category. And that's, again, on a 14-day average, which is the system the state uses. And we'll tell you, we reached out to the state today to see if they had planned to switch from 14-day to a seven-day average, which is what the CDC is utilizing. They do not plan on amending their system to kind of line those two systems up. So on the seven-day, we did some comparisons with that. And it would appear that, so the green and the blue would be the same comparables in the state system, thank you, Marty. So we're at, we'd be at, for the percent positivity, we would fall into the blue with our active cases, we'd fall into the yellow. So we're somewhere in the middle. However, the CDC does provide some clarification on that. And they do say that if, you know, when you're kind of in between interpreting these numbers, you defer the higher category. So from the CDC, we'll fall into the yellow category. Again, we're at the lower end, and the community itself is doing very well. All the markers that I've talked about with community spread, family spread, we're seeing decreases in all those elements. We're really impressed with it. Cheryl, when she puts her reports out, she gives, you know, we call it the smiley face interpretation. We get four or five smiley faces. We've had a good couple of days, and we're getting a lot of those lately. So we're doing well as a community. Still, no evidence of in-school spread. We really take a hard look at that. You know, we've had cases, we do have cases of students who are in school that do contract COVID, but we're not seeing it spread beyond that. And we look at that hard. You know, we really spend a lot of time on that. So regionally, we do see cases decreasing in all the communities. More and more communities are coming out of the red. In fact, this week, there was a significant drop statewide, specifically in Western Mass. So we're feeling really good about that. You know, there's a lot of factors that go into that. I'm certainly not an epidemiologist, but the rates of vaccines are increasing, and we're seeing the situation stabilize through travel and things like that. So I think I covered most of that there, Marty. If there's anything else you want me to elaborate on?
Chief, the slides here kind of capture the difference there and how they, you know, they're looking at the community transmission slightly differently with the four different levels. So I think you explained that. This slide here, it captures, it's our best attempt to summarize the very dense CDC guidance. And, you know, I don't know if Andy wants to jump in here, but when we look at the implementation of the mitigation strategies, you know, I'm proud of how we've hit those first five bullets. And I don't know if there's anything that you guys would like to add relative to the mitigation strategies that we have been able to implement.
Yeah, Marty, just before I, I'm going to kick it over to Andy and Nick a little bit this. So within the CDC guidance, there's a toolkit or a checklist. We were actually feeling pretty good about ourselves as we looked through that. We hit a lot of those markers very early in this game. We, as we went down through the list, we really didn't feel like we were lacking anything. And a lot of it was kind of, yeah, we did that already. So Andy and Nick, if you guys want to speak to that a little bit more, most of that was you guys' great work in working with the administration of the schools.
Yeah, for my part, I'd just like to add, as I've said all along, I think the record speaks for itself. Everybody in the schools has done such an excellent job carrying out these mitigation strategies that the numbers, the numbers are low for a reason. It's because of the hard work that's been put in by everybody in the school system. So I can't emphasize that enough.
Yeah, I'd like to second that statement and really recognize our custodial teams and our facilities maintenance teams for the job that they've been doing. I think without their efforts, you know, in-person learning wouldn't be a thing. And we're going to continue with our mission to have the cleanest facilities possible and maximize our ventilation all the way through.
Nick, I suspect if I could maybe tap into your background on this, I suspect one of the questions that we would get is that as we, if we're able to move forward with providing more additional in-person learning, do you feel like we're still well-positioned in terms of air exchange and ventilation?
Certainly, our goal is going to be to keep that at the maximum. And as temperatures warm up, as we get into the spring, it's easier to do that when we don't have the risk of freezing pipes or damaging our heating equipment. We can open our dampers 100% of the way, and we can utilize the windows more often to get that cross ventilation and get that fresh air into the buildings. So as we come out of winter, it bodes in our favor to have these buildings breathe better.
So I think that probably exhausts some of the thoughts that we had initially. Perhaps the committee has some questions for some of our town officials.
Yeah, thanks to everybody for that update. And again, I really appreciate all the work everybody's put into this. And I know the hard work you did behind the scenes to bring this to us. So thank you for that. My question is for Nick. Nick, one of the things that we're going to talk about tonight is Wednesdays, right? And Wednesdays in the afternoon, that's been reserved for deep cleaning. And I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about that from your perspective, about how necessary that is based on what we know about COVID now, which is different than what we knew about COVID back in September, and whether the sorts of cleaning you're talking about is possible if we have kids in the building full day on Wednesday.
So on Wednesdays, we were utilizing electrostatic equipment. And the disinfectant that we're using in the electrostatic sprayers is a chlorine-based. So it does leave behind a strong scent and a little bit of residue that does need to be wiped up. And our concern was exposing staff and students to that. I will say that Wednesdays have been really beneficial from a facilities perspective in that in adjusting our second shifts to working during the day in some of these schools, we're really missing out on some of the cleaning of floors and extra things that we normally get into at nighttime. And we've been able to make up ground on Wednesdays, not having as many personnel in the buildings. So from my angle, you know, the off-Wednesday is really useful, but I also see the need for, you know, getting the kids back in the building as well.
Thank you, Nick. Marty?
So thank you for that question, Kevin, and Nick, for your attention to that. The, you know, one of the things that we should note is that the possibilities that we're presenting to you tonight, the plans that we're presenting to you tonight to incorporate, you know, a four-day learning plan for students. Acknowledging that right now, the Wednesday arrangement, the Wednesday schedule is memorialized in an agreement that we have with the LEA. And so, you know, if that is something that the committee would like to review and revise, I would just want to make sure that we fulfill our obligation to review that with the LEA. But I think you're fairly representing the fact that we have received a number of questions about the Wednesday schedule. And, you know, with everything we do since August, we've tried to review and revise and make informed changes and adjustments. The Wednesday schedule, though, just noting that it is memorialized in that agreement that we have with the LEA.
Thank you, Marty. Any more questions? Mr. Friggin?
All right. Thank you so much. And, all right. All right. So I'll go back to the summary slide. And, you know, again, I think that in the simplest form possible, it kind of gives you an overview of some of the things that we're prepared to talk to you about tonight. So I'll start with, if I could, I'll start with our elementary principals. And the elementary principals have, they're familiar this year, and they have regularly worked to expand in-person learning, starting with our K-2 students and working through grades three and four. And so tonight, here to talk to you about what it would look like if we are able to move forward with grade five for in-person learning. So I'll start with, their stories are somewhat similar, but there's some nuances at each building that are probably worth discussing. So I'll start, if we could, with Center School and Principal Hutton.
Thank you, Marty. So this is the fourth time we're coming to you to tell you about our plan to bring back some students for in-person. So we're going to try to be as concise as possible. Our fifth-grade enrollment at Center School, I have 70 students with three sections. Our Cohort C at Center, as of this week, was seven students. We have talked to each of those families. So the total students returning for four days in-person learning would be 66 or possibly 67. So the class size with three sections would be 22 in each class or possibly 23 in one of the three sections. So I'm able to repurpose three of the largest spaces at Center School. That would be our library, our music room, and our art room, and to maintain six-foot distancing in each of those rooms, if not a little bit more, they're pretty spacious rooms. And this is the work we need to accomplish before we return. Obviously, repurposing, we're going to have to move the furniture and some of the items, store some of the things. Nick was by Center today, and we walked through a couple of those spaces. So we're already on top of that. We're going to have a couple of satellite lunch spaces. I can seat 46 in the cafeteria. And then with the extra 20, 21 students, they would go into the two empty fifth-grade classrooms. Again, they're pretty spacious classrooms. And more importantly, with spring coming, we were really lucky at Center that we had most of our lunches outside with the good weather. We have the picnic tables out there. We have our beautiful field. The kids didn't mind sitting cross-legged outside, eating their lunches. So we plan to get outside as soon as possible, but we do have those classrooms for our lunch space. We'll need to set up our classrooms. Marty talked to Nick about, you know, securing consistent custodial help. It's really important to us at each of the elementary It's really important to us at each of the elementary schools that each day we have two custodians because of our satellite lunch spaces. So that, that's, it's very problematic if there's a day where we don't have our custodial help. And then I've begun to work with IT to secure some smart TVs on carts. I have one of these systems in the library, but we want to make sure that even though these are very spacious rooms, we want to make sure that we have the optimal instructional setup for the teachers. So what that means is they're very visual, they like to use all the technology tools they've had available to them in the classroom. So with the smart TVs on a cart, they'll have more flexibility for their instruction and they can use all the repertoire of strategies that they're used to using. So that's where we stand at Center right now with our fifth grade.
Thanks so much, Donna. And next up is Principal Pratt from Wolf Swamp. Here. We need to unmute Mrs. Pratt. Oh, there we go. All right.
So at Wolf Swamp, we have 53 fifth graders, three sections currently, including Cohort C. Our class sizes are 17, 17 and 19. So there are seven. We have not gotten in touch with everyone. We have tried to call everyone. So we think we would have 46 to 47 students coming back, which are sizes of 14, 16 and 17. The idea that Wolf Swamp is that our current fifth grade classrooms could have each 17 students. And we do have a few parents who have confirmed that they will not be returning to in-person learning. So we do not have to repurpose rooms, they can stay in their current classrooms. Some of the challenges is Cohort C students returning overall this vacation. I moved a second grade classroom to the library since we had some students moving to keep the six-foot distance. As Donna mentioned, consistent stodal needs. Besides the lunchroom at Wolf Swamp, we also do cleaning between the pre-K sections. So after the morning, students leave, they clean those rooms before the PM students come. So that's really important for us. We also put down Cohort C specials. It's just a little complicated scheduling. When we have a Cohort C class, they are coming from three schools and they might have had different specials. We just try to work around that and it sometimes is, is dependent upon how many sections they have at their current school. So that sometimes can just get complicated. That is something we just need to be careful of and work out. And that's Wolf Swamp.
Thank you. And we'll turn to Blueberry and Principal Stack. We'll need to unmute. There we go. Are you able to unmute?
I'm in. Thank you, everybody. Thanks to Donna and Marie and to the, to the committee, to Marty, all the administrators on the call. I know everybody's doing a lot of hard work, so thank you to that. So similar structure for our slides here tonight. So total enrollment, 75 kids right now, 18. You have the class sizes there. We have four sections. Even talking to families as, as late as, you know, 6:01, just trying to understand their intentions for Cohort C. So we have six students who will remain in Cohort C. I do want to bring everyone's attention to the fact that in December, we had 19 students who were in Cohort C. So we are definitely seeing an interest and a need, as Dr. Abbott described earlier, for, for kids to return for, for more in-person learning. So we are feeling that as well. We are going to bring back our plan at six feet, four days a week, 69 students. So you do see the class sizes there, 16, 17, 18 and 18. The challenges at Blueberry are a little more significant due to the amount of sections that we started out with. Luckily, we don't need to add sections right now for our fifth grade, but we are beginning this, this return for our fifth grade at maximum capacity. So that's just with, at maximum capacity, given the current rooms that we are using, which allows for the least disruption for our fifth graders, but also allows the least disruption for other grades too. Every time we repurpose a room or move, that obviously disrupts some kids and some teachers. So again, we, we may need to repurpose and reconsider lunch with any additional Cohort C returning students. I think really important to mention and for everyone here to know, the viability of all seats for in-person students. So we have seating, for example, for 18, but it is important for everyone to understand that the, the environment in which kids will, will learn, they are wall-to-wall children. Where, where we have the spacing and we can bring the kids back, there will be some, some kids who are very much in the front of the room with, with some visibility challenges to the board. And we will also have kids way in the, in the back of the room. So that is the continued work that I feel I need to do with the staff, working with my teachers, helping to understand and communicate to our families the benefits of coming back, but also just our challenges that we are going to continue to try to work through. I, again, the challenge of the, the teaching experience and the learning experience for the student, I have some concerns about that. I, I have a wonderful staff. We all have wonderful staff, but again, we need to talk through what that's going to look like. What's that going to be like for children with 18 in a room? We, we are six feet apart, but we have to be very careful and planful and thoughtful about how we pass in the classroom, how we pass to wash our hands, to take breaks, those kinds of things. I'm confident that we can get to that exact solution, but I am encouraged by a few more weeks to continue to have those conversations with, with everybody. Marie already mentioned the staffing for Cohort C specials, so that's something that we've begun to work on. Everyone will have a special. That's, that's not the question. It's making sure that there's a variety for all of the kids, whether they're in-person or remote. And then lunch staffing, I think Donna had mentioned this earlier, we are, you know, some days very well-positioned in the lunchroom with staffing and custodial cleaning. And on the days that we're not, we're not. So I, you know, that's just, we need to make sure that that is also stabilized and consistent. So similarly to what, what Marie and Donna already said. So that is, that's Blueberry Hill.
Thank you, Donna, Marie and Amy. Appreciate that. So, you know, I think, I appreciate Amy's candor, kind of recognizing that we're, we're working on sort of thin margins here in the sense that, you know, staff is stretched out over more classrooms and that we have, you know, additional satellite lunch spaces, for example, say at, at Center School. And so that, that challenges the cleaning protocols that we want to make sure are in place. But, and, and, you know, naturally, you know, when there are an additional number of students in a classroom or in a building, it does increase the chances that we will need to, if there is a COVID positive case, it does increase the chances that there would be a greater number of staff or students involved in a, in a contact tracing event. So I think it's important just to acknowledge that, you know, and as Amy kind of hinted at, the, the shifter movement of a small number of students from Cohort C to in-person learning really could, you know, and we welcome them back, don't get me wrong, but it would, it creates some logistical challenges and perhaps the need to repurpose rooms and make sure that we are able, on the operational side, to, to achieve this. So thanks to our elementary principals. Maybe it makes sense to stop there and see if you have any questions on that.
Thanks, Ryan. And thanks again, y'all are just amazing at going through all these steps and doing all this, this effort. Mine is just more kind of like a, just out of curiosity. I've worked in, I'm an elementary educator and I've worked in an old building, a portable building and a brand-new building. So I know that the, and I appreciate all of you talking about, you know, the environment that the students will be learning in. I love how Amy said, you know, it's not just about the instruction, but it's also about, you know, the, more so about the learning. But Donna, just like a simple question, what is a, like, I, we have smart boards, but what's a smart TV? Is it like big? Is it like interactive?
It is, it's quite large and it's on a cart and it's on a very movable cart. And the teachers can connect it to their laptops, so it, it becomes their projection system. They can do everything that they can do with the projection system and the Elmo and all of that. It just, it just gives them a lot of capabilities. And again, it moves around very easily. So if you think of the setup, Gianna, you know, Center. So if you think of the art room, the projection system is at the end of the classroom. So the kids, to seat them there, they're not going to be able to use that. It's not going to be operational to have the kids sitting there. So if they have that portable system, they can move it around the room and, and be able to have access to all the tools that they're used to using for instructional purposes. So I hope that.
Okay, great. Because I'm so old that I was picturing like that little cart on wheels with the, you know, the TV and the, you know, the video. I don't even remember what they're called, video cassette. So yeah, so thank you for clarifying.
No, it's quite, it's quite large, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, I just wanted to echo, thank you. I think this looks wonderful. I think it is absolutely fabulous. But one just question is on Cohort C, the family, as of today, is staying Cohort C? Any expectation around timing that we've communicated to them? Is it a two-week? Is it a month? Or is this for the rest of the year? Just.
I think it, it depends on the school. We, we want to be as flexible and nimble as we can. So at, at some schools and some classrooms, it might be easily, you know, we can make that adjustment very easily if there is a Cohort C family that expresses a need or an intention to come back in for in-person learning. But at a, you know, perhaps in a school like Blueberry, it would require some repurposing of classrooms and some re-engineering of lunch. And so we would want to frankly access the, sort of the DESI permitted allowance that, that tells us that we can ask families to wait up to six weeks. And again, that, that's at the outer edge and frankly, typically our administrators turn these things around much, much faster, sometimes in a matter of, you know, a day or two. That's, that's more the norm, but I think it is important to be, you know, transparent with the community on this, that it, it, it becomes more challenging to receive the Cohort C students back when we have, when we're working on the margins. Thanks for that question. I think that's an important issue to bring up.
Thank you. Marty?
Thanks so much. So we will, we'll proceed and look for an opportunity to report back to the community and the committee. Next is middle school in-person learning. And so Principal Allen and Principal Nelson are here tonight. One of the things that the committee has charged us with was to make sure that we had updated the, we call it the pressure testing, the, you know, kind of giving you updated information on the number of students that can be educated in classrooms at each building at, at six feet, at, at three feet and that add a point in between. And so we, we, we did refresh that data at each level. So I'm going to skip down to that for starters and, and this is, this is the arrangement at Williams and it gives you an idea of the number of sections that can run while observing each of the distance standards that are identified there. And you'll see that, you know, even at a three-foot standard, we would be very much challenged to bring back all of our learners at the middle school. You know, this is, this is part of the, you know, I think the frankly, the, some of the, the needs, the layout, the footprint of our middle schools, this whole pandemic has underscored the, the need to have some modern buildings that, that, that are, have a more flexible application and that with, with up-to-date HVAC and electrical systems. But that's a side editorial note, I guess. But, so you'll see here with Williams and we can linger on it and if you have any questions on it, we're happy to try to explain, but we would be, you know, significantly challenged to bring the students back even at that lower DESI standard of, of three feet. At Glenbrook, you'll see that it is, there is some additional room, but you'll notice that, you know, at the, at the three-foot level, it, it sort of drops off, you know, where if you're just talking about A and B, you can get a decent number of the sections in, but once you, you know, they're, they're pretty much maxed out at that three-foot level. And so once, once you start adding in some Cohort C students, you'll see that the, our capacity to educate all of our middle school students at that, at that three-foot standard drops off significantly. So I hope that's, that's helpful data for you. Where we see, and we can come back to this, where we see the most opportunity is at the sixth grade and that's what Principal Allen and Principal Nelson are here to discuss tonight. So I'll just, I'll zoom back out a little bit to current enrollment, just to give you a snapshot of what we're looking at. You'll see that the, the number of students in that in-person for four or four and a half days a week column, these are students that might be in special education programs or they might simply have been identified through a process at, at Glenbrook to, to come in four or four and a half days per week. So this is a, you know, it's coded as a separate cohort in our, in our student information system. At Williams, you'll see similarly, they've had great success in inviting students in at four or four and a half days a week already. So whatever we're talking about tonight is on top of the 14 at sixth grade, the 14 at seventh grade and the 14 at, at eighth grade at Williams. And, and so in the aggregate, it looks something like this. And so we do have, you know, we do have a sizable number of students that are still accessing learning remotely, more at Glenbrook, just bunch jumping around here a little bit, but more, more students are accessing remote learning at Glenbrook. When you see 21 out of 114 at grade six, 34 out of 109 at grade seven and 32 out of 111. So there are, you know, many, many families that still believe, that still feel that a remote experience is working for their child and perhaps the right choice for them. So I think we have to acknowledge that and, and understand that. So middle school, next steps. Largely, this slide focuses on this sixth grade feasibility study that I mentioned, but I would ask Principal Allen or, or Principal Nelson just to give us some sense of where things stand with the, the first three bullets, which have also enhanced the in-person experience. So turn it over to Principal Allen and/or Principal Nelson.
Okay. Hello.
All right. Hello.
So I know Marty just touched on this, but where, where space allows, continue to identify students for four days of in-person learning. We are constantly talking to teams and working with families to see if we can get more kids in here, which I know at Glenbrook, we got seven new kids in this week, which we're pretty proud of. So it's just, our space is maxing out, potentially in the lunchroom, but we're, we're doing the best we can to make sure we can fit as many kids we can bring back at four days. Is Beth unmuted? Sorry.
I'm unmuted. I, yeah. Do I need to get this?
Take it away, Beth. Take it away.
Sure. So, you know, beyond continuing to refine the explore block, I think it's, we've come here the past few times that we've presented to the school committee and shared the ways that we already have enhanced the explore box. And we want to continue to do that. The explore block has been greatly utilized for students to access some mental health supports from our counselors during this time, for individual check on, check-ins with teachers, both our remote teachers, our remote with teachers, both our remote teachers, our remote students, as well as the in-person students are doing small group um, work with teachers during that time. There's one-on-one instruction, there's targeted interventions going on there. We are accessing this for special education supports at that time, as well as literacy lab and math supports. Um, we have teachers running study groups during the X block. So they are getting extremely creative, trying to find what students need and maximizing that time. Um, so we will continue to make sure that we are doing the best by every student during that explore block in the middle of the day. And then, as you may have seen, and if if you're in the community and did not see this, um, on the Friday prior to vacation, Principal Allen and I released a schedule notifying families and students that we'd be increasing the time on learning by 20 minutes a day, which increases the time on learning for 80 minutes a week for all middle school students. Um, and we did that through a modification of our current bell schedule. So at the beginning of the school year, when we began in September and we were planning, um, there was a lot more concern and a lot less facts about the amount of contact time students could have in the hallway between passing. We now know that it is not transmitting in the hallway when they're passing in the hall for a very short period of time. So we felt comfortable reducing that passing time and putting some of that time back into academics and time on learning. Um, which brings us to the sixth grade feasibility study. Um, and that's kind of why we're here tonight. We are beginning to explore the possibility of of offering four days of in-person learning to all of our sixth grade students at both middle schools. Now, you just saw a slide that showed we can do zero out of 37 sections at Williams and zero out of, I think, 26 sections at, or 29 sections at Glenbrook. We, that is our current numbers with how our facility is set up today. We are getting extremely creative and part of that is all of these bullets that come below. And I will let um, Principal Allen speak to the next point.
So one of the things that we uh, we need to sort of understand, and I know our goal is to try to, our proposal is our goal to start on the 22nd, which would be the first day of the third trimester. So what we're hoping to get is parents um, to survey and they have to choose either in-person four days or remote learning. And if they choose cohort C, then that would be the remainder of the trimester. Because as we plan for all the things that we have to do to bring all the other kids back, we would need that commitment from the families to choose to be in four days or choose to stay in cohort C and or go to cohort C. So I think the survey will be really telling as far as what we can do with our numbers once we hear from parents.
Um, so after we gather feedback from our families to understand how many students are looking to come back in-person learning, we also think it's really important and extremely valuable to gather our educator feedback. Um, Nicole and I have started some of these discussions and our educators are on the front line, they're doing this work every day and we need to hear from them, we need to hear their ideas, they have brilliant ideas, they have ideas that we haven't always thought of. Um, so we want their voices heard and we need to gather that feedback and we need to um, give them the time to to think about that and and process what this might look like and what model um, might be best for students as we might have to shift some schedules around and classrooms around and um, all the other ripple effects that come with uh, making a move like this.
And then similar to elementary, we would be posting and hiring for a cohort C teacher to alleviate that. Um, you know, if we have more kids in front of the teachers, it's not having 20 kids in front of you and a few on a computer still, if there's a way that we can gather um, another teacher to be able to support the cohort C kids that um, will be at home.
Um, physical space evaluation, so we are looking at other classrooms and other spaces in our building, just as our elementary colleagues did several months ago when they made this change. Um, we are looking at our additional spaces. Um, we do have some classrooms that have a larger footprint. Um, and we are trying to make uh, feasibility assessments as to what classroom moves would make the most sense, um, and what classrooms have to move to make this this work.
And at Glenbrook, we have such a quirky building as it is. So we have um, collapsible walls downstairs in sixth grade that if you just release some of them, you can make a bigger classroom. Um, so then we're trying to utilize that too, to see how that works. And then transportation, we have to evaluate, right now, I think sixth grade is our heaviest um, group of kids that gets transported, especially at Glenbrook. Um, and I know there's a lot on cohort A days and a lot on cohort B days. So I guess I'd have to work with um, Mr. Mazza on that and um, the bus company as well, to see i- if it's doable and what that looks like on a bus, is there additional buses, stuff like that.
Um, we have put to use a lot of our desks in the cafeteria this year. So um, and previously, the middle schools, both facilities, had a lot of tables for student workspaces. So um, likely a small hurdle, but something that we definitely have to consider. And we're we're working through that now, right now too, to see how many um, physical desk spaces we have and how many additional we need. Um, as part of that, it would be, we use a lot of the desks in the cafeteria and will certainly need additional um, lunch space at Glen, uh, Williams, we can fit 67 people. At Glenbrook, they can fit 58 students in the cafeteria. So where Williams is look, 53, Williams is looking to bring back 94 students. Um, certainly, we need to find space for 27 of them um, to eat lunch and we are committed to finding that space.
Yeah, similar to Glenbrook, we're looking at spaces, we may have three different spaces that we need to use for lunches to bring back kids. We have 114 sixth graders at Glenbrook. And again, depending on what the survey shows us, as far as what kids would still continue to stay in cohort C or go to cohort C, um, will allow us to understand better how much, how many more spaces we need, as well as who's gonna supervise those spaces during lunches. And then you, the la, um, lastly, music and PE at Glenbrook um, are pretty large classes. So we just need to figure out um, what's um, okay and approved to use for spaces. Um, we're hoping obviously PE will eventually be outside, which would be great. But as far as numbers go, like our music classes, some of our high classes right now are 37, 35, 33, 31. And that would mean like all kids, that includes the cohort C kids currently right now. So we will not know the size of those classes until we do the survey, but we may have to move music to potentially the auditorium. And then we just have to talk to maybe Andy and Nick on facilities on, is it okay to use that space, given that there's no windows in there? I don't know. So that's the kind of things that we just need to work out, um, kind of as a team, to see if, you know, the spaces in our building could be used for different um, groups. And that's, that's it.
Yeah, thank you both. And um, the uh, you know, certainly the 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 transportation guidance has shifted. I think the committee's aware of that. So that's something that we have to unpack and see how that matches up with the, with the plan that um, Beth and Nicole are are developing. And, you know, understand it is a feasibility study. I, we've brought back, we've regularly, I think, I hope, uh, brought back good news to the committee and to the community. I hope we can bring back good news again on this, but I I I don't want to, you know, I sort of want to make sure we manage expectations and lay out for the whole community, all the the puzzle pieces that need to be uh, identified and put together here to make this happen. So um, I appreciate this as a, as an ambitious plan and and something that will require you know, a lot of our, our coordinated work. Again, this, once this, when you do this, it it involves central office, it involves tech, it involves facilities, it involves the town officials, it involves the principals, the teachers, the clerical staff, everybody is pitching in to make this stuff happen. So I thought it might make sense to stop there, see if you had any questions on the middle schools.
Okay.
I guess my question is, um, how do you guys have, possibly have all the time to do this? This is um, quite a list, um, super impressive and students are very, very fortunate that um, all the principals throughout the district, um, including at the middle school right now, are making extra time to do all this stuff. And it looks like the teachers are helping and the custodians. So I think as someone else said before, it's just a a team effort across the board. And I feel very confident that if you can check all the boxes and make it happen, that you will. And we appreciate that. And the same thing to the elementary school principals. Um, getting grade five back seemed like pretty difficult, but it looks like it's happening, which is super exciting. So, thanks.
Anybody else? I don't see any more questions, Marty?
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate that, Bronwyn. The uh, next is high school in-person learning and some potential next steps. Again, uh, bringing forward what I believe to be an ambitious plan, a creative plan, and one that um, is, you know, acknowledges the um, that we're still in the midst of a pandemic. And uh, so Principal Landers is here. We have some, some background data that that may or may not be helpful to you. You'll see the, the number of in-person learners, the in-person four-day learners that um, the high school has identified largely through the child study process, perhaps they're students that are um, with intensive special education needs. Uh, but the number that jumps out at me on this slide is the 77 number. This is the number of seniors that have uh, opted, taken advantage of, not everyone has, but the number of seniors that have decided that they would like to access the four-day of in-person learning that Principal Landers and his team have offered. So uh, and then next is some data relative to the, uh, again, the committee had asked us to to refresh the pressure test data, just to make sure we have up-to-date information on the number of sections that could run at various distance standards. I shared with you in your meeting packet, a two-scale drawing by Mr. Dunkerly, uh, a qualified mathematician and that someone who understands uh, um, the the engineering and the specifications of this building as well as anybody. So Paul, thank you for your, your work on doing this uh, pressure testing. Uh, and you'll see that we have some opportunities here, uh, that we'd like to um, build, you know, kind of be reflected in the plan that Principal Landers will talk to you about. And so I'll turn it over to Principal Landers to talk about some of the things that are currently happening and some potential next steps. So Principal Landers.
Thanks, Marty. So I I I, thanks for, thanks for acknowledging, Paul, because I just want to acknowledge the school committee is kind to the admin team and and often gives us accolades. But shame on me if I don't give Paul Dunkerly and Lisa Estradios, my two assistant principals and and my school counselors and my specialized staff, because it's been a, it's been a, um, it's been a, a busy year, but it's been really, really busy since February 1. Um, so let me start there. So everything I say from now on, I just want to clarify that all of this is possible because cohort C was closed on January 29th, Friday, January 29th. So we came to school on Monday morning, February 1, with a different set of rules. And I say that because I've been very uh, transparent with the families at home, that all of this planning is up through and including, but not after April 9th. And I say that to, I I said it to the superintendent, we talked about that again today, and I said it to the, I just want to be transparent with the committee, because there's a decision, all of this work that we're doing, there's another decision that has to be made. I came with a recommendation to um, you know, give cohort C an option to come back by January 29th or stay out through it, through uh, April 9th. And and the committee was supportive of that and I'm appreciative. But I I say, I I just want to reiterate that because if, I I think we have to make another decision and uh, by, I would say mid-March, for what we're going to do, starting on Monday, April 12th, if that makes sense. And I can talk about that in more detail later. But I I wanted to say that because all of what I'm about to tell you is only possible because of what we did with cohort C. Um, so beginning on February 1, uh, we dove into it. Um, and um, Marty had said, the child study team identified uh, over 90 students, 90 offers were made, we had 52 accepted. Um, those students are on the ground, those students are are at LHS four-day right now. Um, and and he also mentioned the seniors. So right before uh, winter break, I sent an email out to the 132 seniors that um, were in cohort A and B. Um, and we offered, we asked if they would want to come back. We were upfront that we, we couldn't promise it, but we were gonna promise to try to make it happen. And as of the window closed today, um, even though we have 77 seniors on that uh, chart that Marty just showed, 74 of them uh, have all come in over the last week. Uh, it's, you know, quick math is 56% of the seniors, we offered it to right before uh, vacation took it. That's amazing numbers, it's awesome, was happy to see those numbers, and will be happy to see our seniors back, and that is gonna happen next week. So just to put that in perspective, um, since February 1, 222 students uh, at LHS were offered four-day learning. That's 24.6% of our entire population. I thought that was a, that's an interesting statistic. One quarter of the school's been offered um, in four-day in-person learning since February 1, earlier this month. So the next steps, what do we want to do? We want to now delve into, we're digesting as um, as we speak, right before this meeting, I was talking to Mr. Dunkerly and and Mrs. Estradios. Mrs. Estradios is crunching numbers as we speak. Uh, we're creating ice blocks, we're making adjustments in lunch, and those seniors will join us next week, beginning on March 1st. Um, and then what do we do to continue the work and for grades nine, 10, and 11? Um, so a next step is to reach out to those families, those parents and guardians, and um, engage with them, uh, explain to them that we would like to give an opportunity to to those ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students, again, only in 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 cohorts A and B. Uh, for now, cohort C is is closed, but uh, we're gonna reach out to all A and B cohorts in grades nine, 10, and 11, uh, survey parents and caregivers and and see if they would be um, be willing to return. I want to be honest about this next part, because this has been really a conversation for all of about 36 hours between me and the superintendent, so I want to be transparent. I I think we all sense that there is a pendulum shift here. The numbers are great, we're excited, some, some, some uh, area districts are uh, beginning to think about um, four-day in-person. So for the seniors, uh, it was very clear that that seniors would have a a choice of staying two days a week, or if they wanted to come back, four days a week. Um, but the, the, the goal is to um, while considering and taking into the needs of families and not being definitive tonight, I I want to be upfront and transparent to the committee and to the parents at home, that the goal would be to try to uh, eventually get to two cohorts in nine, 10, and 11. And that would be cohort E, which is, comes in four days a week, and cohort C, which is remote. Um, again, it's in early stages, we, we want to be, we want to see what kind of impact that would have on families. We certainly want to continue to work with our families and we don't want to drive more families into cohort C, to be, to be fair. But I do want to say that that's been part of the conversation for the last day and a half, you know, do we, do we simply offer to grades nine, 10, and 11, the opportunity to come back, to be in cohort C or to come back four days a week? Um, and I'm happy to discuss that or or listen to insight about that uh, later, if if people would like to to share. In almost all cases, um, cert, with our seniors, and we anticipate for our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders, again, cohorts A and B only, in almost all cases, we will be able to place students in their classes. But I want to be upfront and candid that we do have some challenges. The biggest challenge, um, I would say is that we are going to need to establish some overflow rooms. You know, approximately 65%, or approximately 35, 36% of LHS is cohort C. So that means 64, 65% are there. We can't fit 64, 65% in a classroom, uh, usually has 26 desks and we have a maximum of 13. So there's a uniqueness to the high school schedule, some classes are bigger than others. We, we're confident and by looking at the numbers, that we can fit most students into most of their classes. But I do want to be upfront that there would need to be some overflow room. And the way that we're envisioning that is that it's a, it's a specific space uh, with a, with a supervisor, students come in with their Chromebook, they would, they use their headphones and they zoom into uh, their class while at LHS. It would be ideal if every single student could fit in every single class. Um, but there are a few reasons why we don't want to um, have the entire school coming and going. Let's say. don't want to have the entire school coming and going. Let's say that I could fit in, let's say a, a current Cohort B student wanted to come back four days a week, and she could fit in, on a Monday, she could fit into her A, her B, her F class, but not E. We would not put that student in a position where that student had to get in a car, get home in 10 minutes, and take risky, dangerous chances. That's irresponsible. So there are also power school limitations. But, so we're, we're committed that we want students who come back four days a week to stay with us. But I want to be upfront that, in some cases, they will be not physically in that room. We don't think that that would be more than one or, or two of their overall classes, but I just want to, want to be clear about that. We have some challenges with lunch. And this plan would have to maintain the open campus for 11th and 12th graders for lunch and ice block. We are able, and I give Mr. Dunkerly the credit for this, but we are able to physically fit and seat almost 600 students over our, over our two lunches. But many of our juniors and seniors choose to leave. Overwhelmingly, they choose to leave. That, them continuing to use that open campus option is inherent to us doing this in a orderly, safe fashion. They can stay, but the lines would be a lot longer, the wait time would be longer, students would be gathering in closer, closer quarters. And of those 294 seats, I want to be honest that, you know, about half of those are in the gymnasium. A little bit more than half are in the gymnasium. So it's not like you even have a desk in front of you, but challenges that we can overcome, but I want to, challenges that I want to be upfront about. So anyway, we've, we've added, on, you know, between the students that we've added and between the students that are going to join us next week, we're, we're adding 126 more students who are learning. Like I said, 222 were offered, and 126 took us up on it. And we want to start to continue with ninth, 10th, and 11th graders, once we have a lot more work to do this week with seniors. It's a lot crunching of numbers and making sure everyone's going to have a, a desk to sit at. But it's going to happen, it'll go smooth. Our students have been great, our faculty is amazing. And that's the next phase with seniors. And then the ninth, 10th, and 11th graders is the next phase. And, you know, March is going to be a, a busy, a busy month. And like I said, I, I just want to end with, I, I just want to keep the, the decision about Cohort C on everyone's radar. I don't believe that it's within my purview to tell, as a principal, to tell Cohort C they can't come back quarter four. So I just want to have a further dialogue with the superintendent and the committee as we near mid-March. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Tom. Marty, can you go back to that high school slide?
Sure.
And I'm going to mute you, so we don't echo. Yeah. So Tom, I have a question about the four-day, two-day thing. It notes that there are extenuating circumstances. Would that be maybe a high school student, middle school sibling, and the sibling is on a two-day parent's work, and they expect the high school student to be home with the middle schooler, and that would be a reason to give them a two-day week?
That would certainly be, that would certainly be an example.
Okay. I just want to make sure that kind of thing's available, because obviously with families working, that can be difficult sometimes. Marty?
Sorry. That, that's, that's a great question. And it's something that Tom and I have talked about. And, and he's right that this is, we're, we're sort of still at the design phase on this. And so there are some decisions in front of us. I think the high school admin is great with, you know, providing flexibility to families. And I think you, the example you give is a good one. So, you know, understanding that there's, there's still, conceptually, we have a, a plan that we think is viable, but there's definitely some design work still in front of us. And we, you know, certainly want to engage the staff and make sure they understand what it will look like and, and get some feedback from them based on how to, how to ensure its success. So, so it is, I would say, an ambitious step forward, a, a credit to Principal Landers and, and Mr. Dunkerly and, and Lisa Estradios for doing a lot of legwork over the last, you know, 48 hours or so to, to think about this conceptually. So we're, we're excited about the, the opportunity, but it does beg the question about what will happen in the fourth term. Tom is right to put that, that on our minds right now. We don't necessarily have to figure that out tonight, but that is something that we will have to figure out. I, I would say personally that we would want to give families that opportunity to return to us in the fourth quarter, you know, based on their own individual circumstances. So, but that's something that we'll have to, you know, kind of do some additional thinking and planning around and come back to the committee with some, some thoughts and ideas and recommendations.
Tom, I have one more, and I'll call, call you. The overflow room, Tom. Will the teacher be keeping track of who goes to overflow so that it rotates and it's, it's not the same kid out of the 13, 15s, so everybody gets a turn?
So that's a, it's a fair and important question, Ryan. I'll be honest with you, that's, we're dialoguing about that. You know, one way to do it is to go by the first-come, first-serve, whoever signed up on that Google Sheet. We could rotate, but I want to be upfront, I think you know that the challenges of, we have to have seating charts, and we have to have contact tracing. So that's something that we have to, we have to make a decision on. My, my first instinct, and, and again, it's my first instinct, is that we should keep, you know, that's why I think families should, should, and that's why the seniors who are our first, our go, you know, large batch that are, that are rejoining us, are going to have that option. They're going to be able to make a decision of, my daughter is returning, and she's, goes to all her classes on Thursday and Friday, but she has an ice block, and she has, you know, something else. And, and two of her, two of her four classes on Monday and Tuesday, she can go into the classroom, but two she can't. I think that's information important to the, to the family, to, to make that decision. So to, to be honest with you, I mean, that's not solidified. This, this new iteration of the plan is, like I said, relatively new. So that's a, that's a big question. I, I, I understand the concept of rotation for equity, but there are also all kinds of requirements for tracing. And, and then the argument, just the, the fairness of who came first and who signed up. So I want to be upfront that there's more to dialogue about on that front.
Thank you. And one other thing I would add, just to share my own opinion, if there's 13, or whatever it is, 14 puts them over the limit, whatever the number is. And two kids are absent, and the kid has chosen in-person learning, and now they have to go sit in a different room, doesn't seem to make sense to me. So if we could come up with a way for cleaning or something to get around that contact issue, I think would be helpful. I saw a couple other hands. Who else? Jamie, then Bronwyn, and then Nicole. Jamie, you're first.
Thank you. No, I, I appreciate Principal Landers. I truly appreciate everything there. I think this looks wonderful. Mine is just more in overall, was coming back to my question earlier about Cohort C. And I guess what I would like to kind of say is, maybe we regroup at some later point in time. It's not something I'm trying to say, hey, we solve here today. But Cohort C is, you know, the biggest contingent factor, the, the thing that could bring down any of the plans that are, we're going over tonight. So I guess I say, out of fairness of, you know, the, the plans and the students that you're laying this out for, I think we need to come back and really have an open dialogue around, you know, how long is too short, and how long is too long around when somebody can move in and out of the plans, especially if it's going to completely derail what we're talking about with sixth grade, or high school, or the elementary school, whatever it may be. And I think just out of fairness, you know, I appreciate the decision that each of these families are making. It's, it's obviously the right decision for, for their family. But we have a lot of other families that we need to, you know, address as well. We're making some wonderful plans, and we've been holding up these plans. I'm not going to say, it's not because of Cohort C, but we're trying to incorporate these big plans where if all Cohort C came back, we were always trying to be ready. Now we're kind of moving forward, trying to figure all this out. And I, I just don't want to see it derail everything that was talked about here tonight. So I would be very big proponent of discussing this openly and kind of really talking through the pros and cons of being able to let Cohort C in and out. Because I, I kind of listening to it and just kind of, as a committee member saying, it doesn't seem very fair to the kids that are choosing in person, that we could derail their entire, what they want for an education, just by how we're moving folks in and out. So maybe an unpopular thing to say, but you know, the reality is, we've got to look at all the students that are, you know, within the school systems. So just my two cents, nothing to respond to, but just overall, it feels like we're a little disconnected there, to a certain degree, from school, from elementary school to middle school to high school, with the way we're handling those. And I think it deserves a little bit more conversation.
Thank you, Jamie. Maybe, Marty, we can make sure this is an agenda item in the future. Okay. Bronwyn, you were next, in the near future, obviously. Bronwyn?
Oh, thanks. I also wanted to say, if you could say thank you to Mr. Dunkerly, because I, I didn't quite understand the room numbers until I saw the drawings that were sent to us. And that was super, super helpful. And I'm sure it took a long time, but much appreciated because it made sense to me. I just have two questions. One was about, just a follow-up to Ryan's question about the extenuating cases. If someone, or I guess it would be a group of students had to quarantine because they were close contacts of someone in school, would that be considered extenuating for them to be, like, online at home?
Absolutely, absolutely. We would be requiring them to stay out. So we would, we would absolutely give them access. Yep.
Okay. And then the second question was about, and I know it's not going to be a ton of, of classes, as you mentioned, which is great. But the, the idea of making, like, the same kid leave every time, to me, is, like, difficult. And what if that kid happens to be the, the kid that leaves that, you know, one class, like, three different classes? And then, so they're in school, but then they're going to this overflow room, which I think is a fabulous idea. I think that's great. But the idea of it being the same kid, and I wasn't clear on, like, when, it's when they sign up or something?
We have to, we have to decide. Bronwyn, you're right. It's, we have to make some decisions on, on how that is decided. One, one way that we could do it would be the order in which they signed up on the Google Doc that everyone was emailed on, I think it was the 12th, Friday, the 12th of February. That's one way you could do it. Whatever way, we'd, we'd want to be fair and transparent. So that just, that's one way to, to achieve fairness. But, but some people would disagree if the, if the, you know, so lots, lots to consider on that one.
Just for me to be transparent, if it was any kid, I don't think it would be fair, only because, was the survey sent to the parents?
Survey, survey was sent to the parents. I also sent an email directly to 12th graders, but the actual Google link was to parents and guardians, correct.
Right. So I just don't want it to be like, oh, because my parents didn't see the email, or didn't send it back right away, for whatever reason, now I have to go to the overflow room
Sure.
every single time for social studies, or science, or whatever.
Sure.
I know that you guys will have great discussions about it, but I don't, I think it would be really difficult if it was the same kid every time. But otherwise, this is amazing. And I think the students in grade nine, 10, and 11 are going to be extremely excited. And I'm looking forward for them to get back.
We are too. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Nicole, you have a question?
I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering, first off, it says that, sorry, where did it go? Oh, in-person learning, under grades nine through 11, in-person learners may attend four days per week. So would the plan be to open this to families the same way it was opened to seniors, as an option? Or would the plan be that they are expected to be back four days a week unless they have extenuating circumstances? Because it looks like both.
Right. So, so in the last 36 hours, that has been part of the dialogue, to be, to be fair. But as, as I said, and as, as the superintendent said, we, we want to, we want to be transparent here tonight. You know, I mean, there's one, there's, there's one school of thought. We need to, and that is, we need to prepare students to come back for five days of learning next year. That's one school of thought. The other is, you know, we could continue to make the offer like we did to the, like we have done all year so far. Just like we've given people the choice to go Cohort A, B, or C, and just like we did with the seniors. So there's more discussion on that. What we don't want to do is make it so stringent that it harms families for, you know, something, the example that Ryan mentioned, or, or, you know, all of the things that, that might jam families up if there's a real emergency. So, I mean, if, if the committee has strong feelings on that, we're happy to listen to that. And that's why we're, we're laying it out there tonight, if, if they think it's, you know, that's the direction we should go, or if we should go in a different direction with, with choice versus required four days. But it's, it's a, it's a big decision we have to make, and we have to be very transparent with our families when we email them soon.
Thank you. Can I ask a second one? Thank you so much. All right. So my next question goes back to the idea of the overflow rooms. I completely understand that there need to be seating charts, and that those need to be in place for contact tracing purposes. I also teach at high school, and I'm familiar with changing those plans as students move from one cohort to another quickly. So I, I understand that. I'm wondering if instead of looking at it from the perspective of the number of students in order of their signup, which may leave some students in an overflow room for multiple classes. If you're the 350th person to sign up, you're now in the overflow room for four of your classes. Would it be possible for us to look at it from the perspective of ensuring that at least those overflow rooms are spread out among students, that no student should expect to be in an overflow room for more than one or two classes, or whatever it might be? So maybe your social studies is always overflow, but we've seen that that is the case for your social studies class. So we're going to make sure that someone else gets chosen to be in the overflow room for math.
Marty, you have a question answering that?
Yeah. So I think two thoughts. One is, we first need to understand how many students will need to be placed in overflow rooms, in an overflow room. Some of the preliminary work that we've done on this suggests that we're talking about, you know, a small number of students each block that could be easily managed in a single room. Mr. Dunkerly has some sort of initial projections, but we need to see how it plays out. And I think we're, like I said, we're still in that design phase. And I'm aware of one other school that has done this, but I'm not sure if they have overflow rooms or not. So I, my inclination would be to reach out to some districts that have adopted this. I'm not sure many have. I think we're at the leading edge of this. But I'd like to find out if there's other districts that have done it and bring back some solutions to you so that you understand. My, my, my sense is, generally, that you wouldn't want to see a child sort of in an overflow room sort of permanently. That becomes too much part of their experience. I don't anticipate that that will be the case. I think we're, we're looking at a, in nearly all cases, children will be able to be assigned to their classroom. But again, additional study and additional design work has to be done on that.
All right. Thank you very much. And just thank you also to all the staff at the high school for putting the time and energy into this. That's an excellent option for students. I appreciate using that, that space that's there. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole.
Diara, and then Suzie?
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, just, I just wanted to, to offer my, my thoughts on that overflow as well, because it hasn't been mentioned yet. But if you were to, to base it on the order of response responses received, uh, I'm thinking unless it specifically said failure to respond to this in a timely manner could result in your child's placement being different, I don't think it's fair to kind of go backwards and base a decision as big as this on something that they weren't warned what could happen if they didn't do it.
Good point, Gianna. Good point.
Thanks, Gianna. Suzie?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you to all of the administrators. This is a, a bold plan and, and we asked for that and, um, you've delivered and we really appreciate it. So thank you. I know how much time and energy you've been putting into this and, um, constantly. And so, um, we, we really appreciate all of your efforts. I want to, um, echo, uh, some of what Jamie said about cohort C. I think that is a very timely, um, conversation that we need to have. And, and definitely I think, um, as we look at the long game, there's, there's a few things that we need to consider. Tom, you brought up before, you know, we're really trying to get stu-, we're, we're creating an on-ramp to back to full in-person learning for next year. And I think that's important to like recognize that this is a, this is a precursor to, you know, where we're headed. And so the efforts that we put in place are, are critical. And some of the decisions we make about what cohort C actually looks like, this, you know, going, finishing out this year will probably set the stage for next year. So I think that's, that's a really important conversation. Um, I want to talk a little bit too about, just react a little bit to the, um, overflow and, and think about it, um, relative to some of the concerns that we're still dealing with. And I, I appreciate the, the challenges that we're facing at middle school. We all know that we have, um, you know, space challenges, especially for the two grades that aren't going to be served in this current, um, iteration of the plan. But I know this is constantly evolving and I know in talking with Dr. O'Shea, then that's, that's foremost on our mind for the next level. But, um, I don't know if this overflow, um, option could also be considered at the middle school to firm up, you know, some of the, especially the sixth grade, um, to, to make that more feasible. So it's just, just a thought, if this overflow idea could also be instituted, um, at the middle schools, would it make the feasibility of the sixth grade plan, um, uh, work? And then also would that type of plan also, you know, start the process of considering how we could get more seventh and eighth grade students in, uh, four days a week? So just floating that out there. And, uh, I think that's it. Oh, and then, um, I'm going to echo what Kevin said before. Um, I'm just picking up on what everybody said because you're all much smarter than me. But about the Wednesdays, and I, I appreciate the fact that yes, this is definitely something that would need to be, um, done, you know, and, and, and discussed with the LEA, given the current, um, contracts and agreements with, with them. But I do think if we're not making any moves with seventh and eighth, that I'd really like to consider the Wednesday role in seventh and eighth and bringing more students back. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment?
Yeah, I just want to echo everybody else's sentiments on, and thank everybody involved in putting these plans together. Uh, again, we know how hard all of you are working. So thank you very much for all the work that you've put in on this. Um, I, I want to go to, to Tom for a couple of things. Um, if you don't mind going back to the high school.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. It's all right.
First, um, I, I agree. I, I like the idea of the overflow room. I really, really don't like the idea of kids marooned in overflow rooms because their parents had slow internet that day or who knows what. Um, I, I think we need to do better for those kids. And if it's like, you're in the overflow room for a week and we have a seating chart for a week and then we change the seating chart the next week, I mean, whatever, you can figure it out, but I don't like one kid's in there for all of, per quarter or whatever it might be. All right. Um, I want to make sure I understand some of the numbers on this because I was a little bit confused. So next step, grades nine to 11, second bullet point, survey parents and caregivers of students in cohorts A and B if they would like to shift to cohort C. I thought that they already made that decision. What am I missing?
So, I'm sorry, the, the thought there is that, uh, we had asked high school families to make a commitment to either in-person learning or cohort C through the duration of the third quarter. And so they made that decision, understanding that their children would be going two days per week. And so if we are heading in a direction where now they'll be with us four days a week, we would want families to have that opportunity to say, well, I was comfortable with my child going two days a week, but I'm not comfortable with my child going four days a week, so therefore we're going to pull back and, and, uh, have our child learn remotely through cohort C. So we feel like that would, that's just a fair thing to do, to give families that opportunity since we're changing the, what we would expect of them in terms of the number of in-person learning days.
Okay, that, that's helpful. So, so we're essentially saying to the nine through 11 cohorts A and B, we're expecting you either to go four days a week or shift to cohort C, or we have some of these exceptions, but really we want people to make that binary decision.
The, the.
Shift to cohort C or go to four days a week. That's what we're hoping. Okay.
Yeah, that's the default. Yeah.
And Marty, can you go back to the previous slide?
That one?
Yeah. Okay. I want Tom to help me understand the approximate percentage of sections that can run within the limits of A and B cohorts only six foot distance is three quarters. So like that to me is like, there's a lot in the, you know, approximately 25% that are going to have to use the overflow room. Am I reading those numbers correctly or am I misunderstanding what you had said?
No, you're right. That's the 77%. That's why we're, we're confident and comfortable that most students are going to be able to fit in most classes. But you're right. That's why I wanted to be upfront that, that, uh, that not all will.
But, but what I would say is that doesn't translate to a quarter of a child's time will be spent in an overflow room because the 25 or so percent of sections that don't fit that limit, that those are spread out over 800 students. So we just want to be careful to make sure that we don't translate that into 23% of the time, children will not get into their assigned class. That's, that's sort of part of the design work that we still need to do. We just need to run the numbers and understand, you know, how, I'm not convinced we have a big problem here with the number of students that will have to access an overflow room. I think it's a, it's a manageable number each block. And when you're talking 800, 900 students at the high school, it, you know, it, it won't be the norm by any means. That's our initial pass-through, but in fairness to Tom and Paul and Lisa, we're at the early stages of just, of, of designing this. We're going to get after it and work with the staff and figure it out as quickly as we can, but there is some additional crunching that we have to do.
Yeah. And I guess the only thing I wanted to follow up on is just to say that, you know, it's entirely possible that your kid has no overflow issues, but it's also possible your kid has half their schedule are in overflow rooms, right? Because it's, it's really, if you're a parent, you don't really care about what your house looks like is if your kid is in that weird outlier where there's a whole bunch of overflow in their schedule, that's going to be frustrating. And that might be the case. Um, I think we just need to acknowledge.
But in the 23% of sections that, that can't run the way we're talking about here, you're only talking about a small number of students in each of those sections. So it's not that everybody in that, in that section would have to go to overflow. It's just a small number within each section inside that 23%. I hope that makes sense.
No, I, I understand that completely, but, but again, I think that's one of the reasons why we want to rotate the kids through that overflow.
Yeah.
Right? So.
Yeah.
Brown.
Thank you. I just want to go back to something Tom said about, um, I didn't know if, if it needed to be a discussion in terms of, um, the admin kind of deciding it's going to be, you know, four days in or learning from home. Did that need to be a discussion amongst the school committee or is that just something admin can, can decide?
Under what circumstance are you, are you?
Ideally, once you send the email out to the A and B parents that signed up under the idea that it was two days.
Yeah.
And, um, for the people that now know it's four, um, I thought Tom mentioned it was, might be something that we needed to discuss, but I was thinking that it was, if that's what admin thinks is going to work best, except for the extenuating circumstances, then that seems to be a good idea. But maybe I misunderstood.
In other words, whether or not the default is going to be that you must attend four days a week, except in exceptional circumstances, is that? And, and maybe the feedback from the committee that might be valuable is how expansive would you like us to be in terms of allowing a two-day option? Is it, is it wide open? Would, would families be able to pick freely between a fully remote option, a four-day option, and a two-day option? So I think maybe that's the question that, that Tom was suggesting we would benefit from some feedback on or some direction on if that's, unless you want us just to do some additional thought and design on that and then come back to you.
Uh, I have a thought. Can I mute you all? Cause I can't stand listening to myself. I feel. Brown, so, um, I, I think that you all should figure out what is going to work best and come back and tell us what you're going to do. And we've shared our opinions. Obviously you probably didn't think overflow room was going to result in eight questions, but, or comments, but, um, we can't micromanage everything you all are doing in all those buildings. Um, you can come back and tell us what you're doing and we'll give our opinion, but I think the admin team has to, you've come up with this plan without us, and I think you all have to finish that without us and then, and then present it. We'll share our opinions, but, um, which we have already tonight, but I don't think we can micromanage every aspect of this. It would never end. So I think the answer to that question is figure it out and then own your decision and let us know what it is, in my opinion. Nicole, you had a question?
I'm just wondering, um, I, I agree with you entirely, Ryan. I'm, I'm curious about implementation dates possibly at the high school level, knowing that that April 9th date is not so very far away. When would you be hoping to get this in action so that it, it can happen for more than three weeks or so?
Those seniors, seniors are joining us next week, March 1. We'd have more students joining us the week of March 8th. And the most honest answer is we would do it as fast as we could. I don't want to, I don't want to say that every, to, I don't want to say that every single student who wanted to come back, we would absolutely have in the week of that 8th, but we would try like heck to do that. And then we, we would have in all probability, some, you know, more work to do the week of the 15th. But it would be, it would be, uh, it's ongoing. I mean, every day we're going to be surveying and planning and trying to get kids in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Tom? I have one more comment, Marty. If you can go back to the slide way back in the beginning about mitigation, I'm going to mute you again. Drives me bawkers. Oh, so muted. The one with the mitig-, yeah, right there. So I just want to, uh, I think a big thank you to the custodial staff. Nick did mention this, but also the teachers, I could speak with some teachers recently who were discussing like, in their opinion, the biggest mitigation factor keeping the kids safe, as the chief noted for us, that the, the in-school transmission is zero. It's because of the effort of the staff, the teaching staff, custodial staff, probably the office staff. If it's anything like my school, it's a huge effort to keep everything clean and that is the best way to keep this moving forward. So a big thank you to all of them and the students for doing, um, the, the proper protocols to keep this moving forward because none of this happens if those people didn't do those things. So I think they deserve a, a big thank you for making sure that that is, uh, working for us so that you all can present, present this idea. So I just wanted to note that. Note if there's any other, anyone else with a final question or a comment on the presentation? Brown?
Uh, I just wanted to say in general to all the administrators, um, I don't think anyone anticipated, um, this amazing news tonight. I think there's so many parents and students, um, that find out either tonight or tomorrow that are just going to be so extremely excited. And that's because of all the work that you guys have done and very quickly. And it's much, much appreciated by everyone. And just the thought of so many kids getting back and still at six feet is, um, a real testament to how hard everyone's working and it shows how much you guys really want as many students back as possible. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, I, I so appreciate that. And, and you know, there, there's so many solution builders out there that we work with and the solution builders include the folks that are here, um, but they include our, our teachers, our office staff, our partners with the LEA. I mean, they're, they're, you know, I'm, I'm borrowing one of my favorite phrases from Mrs. Hutton, which is, we're looking, always looking to build solutions and to engage the school committee, um, the, the staff who are working at the ground level on this and make sure that we're, we're representing the interests. There's many, many competing interests and, and we want to make sure that we're properly balancing all those. So thank you for that.
Thank you for that presentation and we look forward to the possible next iterations, the feedback and how it all works. And so thank you. We appreciate it.
Keep you posted.
All right. Our next item is a superintendent report.
Uh, I'm, I think you've heard enough from me tonight, unless there's something in particular you'd like to ask me about. I think.
Anyone?
Nothing pressing.
All right. Uh, school community chair report. I'm going to basically say the same thing I always do, which is back to the mitigation efforts, which is a community effort. Um, obviously you go into any store in town, you see this stays six feet apart. Those mitigation efforts on the screen that are for kids, go for all of us. Use your mask. It goes over your nose. That's how you use it correctly. Stay away from people, wash your hands. That works for everyone as much as it does for the kids in the school. And if you don't know what to do, ask your kid. Chances are they've been trained very well by our staff on what they should be doing and you should do it too. That allows us to keep moving forward. As the chief said, we're doing great, but it's not over. So, uh, keep on it, please. Next up is the student rep report. Maxim, you still with it? Maybe get rid of the slides now, Marty? Diane, if, if Maxim is here, can you unmute him? Maxim is here. Fantastic. There he is.
Um, I have nothing more than what we said at the beginning. Thank you.
Sorry, Diane.
But all this is very exciting. Just wanted to say, and I, I posted it on my social media, that this was a conversation that was being happening and people are excited about it.
Thanks, Maxim. You have repeatedly said you want kids back in there as much as possible. Thank you very much. Um, I don't see any other reports in my agendas that correct from our other groups. Correct? Correct. Next up, we have subcommittee reports. Finance sub? I have a whole list of things. We're not talking about any of them. Cool. Policy sub?
Diane, if you could help me out, we're at that second reading and I believe these policies would come up for vote at the next meeting of the school committee. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Well said.
Thank you. Cora Killam sub? I don't see anything. Is that accurate? And Eval sub? Same thing. Brown one? No report? And the other ones, you guys already nodded, noted me, so we're good. So we can entertain, there's no new business or ongoing business, so we can attain that, entertain that motion.
I just have to get back to the screen. Multiple screen. Was there? Where'd it go? Hang on. Oh my gosh, where'd it go? Sorry. Going back and forth between screens. No, I don't have that.
Was there? Where'd it go? Hang on. Oh, my gosh. Where'd it go? Sorry. Going back and forth between screens. No, I don't have it. If somebody else has it, yeah, sorry. Had it. For some reason, my Zoom.
I've got it. I can take it. I moved at the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Purpose to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining for units A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
Do we, we are, we need something to reconvene for? I'm wondering if that's accurate anymore. That was a possibility, but I don't know if that's accurate.
I would say it's not necessary to come back into open session.
Yeah, I don't believe you have to.
Yeah.
Thanks, Diane. So can you say, can we amend that to not reconvene?
Do I need to say the whole thing?
Diane, do we have to say the whole thing over again? I didn't see what you did. Did you nod? Cool. So we're making that to not reconvene?
Because nobody's seconded it. Second.
All right. So now I will read it again. The school committee will meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to not reconvene into open session. This requires a roll call vote. Is there any discussion on this before we vote? Saying none. Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin? Tiana?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. The motion passed at 7-0. Thank you all for coming. See you at the next meeting.
Thank you, everyone.